Good morning, everyone. The time is now nine o'clock. We will go ahead and call the Lake County Planning Commission meeting for October 13th, 2022 to order. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And we do have a Commissioner via Zoom. So Jim, did you want to do a attendance roll call?
Sure. Commissioner Hess not present.
Is absent.
Commissioner Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
He might need to be added as a panelist in the Zoom room if we could check, please.
He's not there.
No.
And Commissioner Field.
Present.
And Chair Price.
Present.
Thank you.
And we will, do you want to wait a minute for Commissioner Brown?
He's not there.
If he's not present, then you would move forward with the meeting. My understanding was we were waiting for him to be added, but if he's not present at all, then he isn't here for the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Nicole. Jim, we could just go ahead and do legal notice at this time?
Okay. All items on the agenda were properly noticed for today's meeting.
Thank you. And our consent agenda, we are looking for approval of the September 22nd, 2022 Planning Commission minutes.
I move that we approve.
Okay, we have a...
Give me a second.
Since we're all here, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Actually, I have to recall.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Even though he's...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Commissioner Chavez? Commissioner Price?
Yes.
And Commissioner Field?
Yes.
Thank you.
And before we get to our first timed item, we can go ahead with citizens input. This is a time for the public to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. Okay, no one in chambers, anyone in the Zoom room for public input? Citizens input? Okay, we do have one hand in the Zoom room. We will allow you to speak and please be sure to state your first and last name.
Hi, this is Bart Levinson. I'm on the county website where normally the video of your meeting would be available and it isn't. So I just wanted to let you know that. Could somebody please check that?
Absolutely. Thank you for letting us know. We have our IT team on it as we speak.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
It says not available.
Okay, I appreciate you letting us know.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we will get to work on that feed on the Internet and we are waiting for 9:05 to take up our first timed item.
Madam Chair.
Good morning.
I opened the website just now for Granicus at County. Are you following the County link?
Mm-hmm.
There is a link in progress for the video for today's meeting.
Okay. Barb, for your comment on the feed, please go ahead and maybe refresh your screen and retry the link and we are going to proceed with our 9:05 item. Our first item is a public hearing continued from September 22nd, 2022 for consideration or excuse me, for consideration of an extension of use permit UPM 22-01 for use permit UP 03-04 and a categorical exemption CE 22-36 for operation of an existing mine. Applicant is DNA Bridge Rock LLC. Project location 8359 and 8400 South Highway 29, Lower Lake, APNs 011-069-13 and 011-069-12.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Eric Porter, Lake County Associate Planner. This was originally brought before the Planning Commission on July 14th. Can I see the mouse, Byron? Thanks. At that time, the Upper Lake Havemetal Tribe expressed concern about three extensions that were pending and they requested a consultation. So we held a consultation for this particular project with them roughly a month after the July 14th hearing. Mine owner agreed to a tribal contract and I received an email from the Upper Lake Tribe indicating that they were okay to proceed with the extension. So the tribal issues have been resolved. This did come back to the Planning Commission on September 22nd. There was an error in the staff report that was actually material and so we corrected that and what's before you today no longer has a reference to an approved modification from 2021 as the prior staff reported indicated. One small correction I need to make. The primary address of this project is 8400. The other address is 8350. It indicated 59 in one of the documents as being the address. It is not. It's 8350 and 8400. So the project itself, this is simply an extension. They will request an expansion and for some reason I can't get this thing to move.
Yeah, hold on one second.
Commissioners, Madam Chair, while they're working on the Internet, I thought I'd clarify a few things in relation to tribal consultation for this extension. Extension, if the item before you does not reach the definition of a project, it doesn't, it does not trigger SEQA. And if it does not trigger SEQA, then a consultation is not required. So any communications that are held with the tribe in that instance are not tribal consultations as SEQA would define them. And in this case, the extension would be to extend a permit that has already gone through a prior evaluation for environmental impact and consistency with general plan and all the other criteria. So any communication with the tribe is not only not required, but this is not the vehicle, an extension is not the vehicle in which to make changes to a prior approved permit under prior approved evaluations. So there would have been no requirement that the applicant enter into agreements. We cannot require them to do so otherwise or at all anyway, but it was not a condition of this extension that the applicant communicate with or enter into agreements with or participate with consultations with tribes.
Okay, thank you.
So just for clarity, you're saying this is not a project?
Well, that would be staff's assessment as to whether or not it reaches the definition of project for SEQA and then that would inform their analysis under SEQA as to what extension, I mean whether or not they apply an exemption, excuse me, yeah, categorical exemption or some other kind of environmental review. This, however, is simply an extension. This is, an extension is not a vehicle in which a prior approved permit would be changed. So they, an extension would not be requiring changes.
I get that.
Yeah.
It's just, it's called project, you know, the titles are project description and project analysis, so I get it, thanks.
That's a good point. That is actually one instance that happens sometimes in planning where a word in normal English vernacular actually has a state definition as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so to get back to the non-project, this is a 20-year extension request for an existing mine. They are not proposing any expansion associated with the extension. Total property size is 312.27 acres and it's owned RLSCWW, which stands for rural lands, scenic combining, wetlands, and waterway. Site plan, it's kind of hard to read this, but it shows the main elements of the primary part of the mine, apparently. I think the photo is more compelling. It shows the entirety of the mine itself. We did evaluate it for general plan conformity to the extent that we verified that the zoning ordinance does allow for mining subject to a major use permit, which is granted, I believe, October of 2003. General plan has two different categories that are applicable. It has rural lands and resource conservation. We didn't find any conflicts with granting an extension to that. Lower Lake area plan is silent on mining, so there was no obvious conflict with the Lower Lake area plan. Aggregate resource management. Each of these goals is maintained along the State Department of Mining Resources or DMR regulations by way of an approved 2003 reclamation plan, annual inspections, and state reporting of the operation. Surface Mining and Reclamation Act. Site undergoes annual inspections and compliance with SMARA regulations and that SMARA stands for Surface Mining and Reclamation Act. Under SMARA, the excavation project undergoes annual inspections, which I've already indicated. Clear Lake Ready Mix provides additional financial assurance cost estimate annually and is required to maintain a mechanism by which the amount for reclamation is available in the event mining should halt and reclamation begins. Because the surface mining area has not been reclaimed, the 2003 reclamation plan continues to be in effect. Zoning ordinance, Article 27, subsection 11, sub T, allows for excavation through a major use permit, which again was granted October 9th of 2003. And I should say the original approval was valid through October 9th of 2023. So they actually applied for the extension a year prior to when they needed to. Excuse me. California Environmental Quality Act, as our legal counsel indicated, extensions are not projects under SEQA. Therefore, no environmental evaluation was undertaken or needed for this extension. So I touched on the tribal concerns. To the mine owner's credit, he voluntarily reached out to the tribe. The county had no role as intermediary other than scheduling a meeting between the mine owner and the Upper Lake Havemetal Tribe. They actually came to an agreement without any recommendation on the part of the county. So the tribal concerns have been alleviated, although they wouldn't apply to this project because it's not SEQA eligible and it's not a project technically. Consequently, our recommendation is to grant another 20-year extension. As I indicated, there will be a modification that's brought before the Planning Commission, but it's still under review. And so for now, this is merely an extension for an additional 20 years unless they begin the reclamation process to restore the land to how it had been prior to the mining operation. And I'll take any questions the Planning Commission might have.
Thank you, Eric. Go ahead.
The zoning refers to wetland waterway. I'm not seeing that on this map. Is that referring to the Manning Flat area?
You'll ask me, I'm not, I'm not quite sure what you're referring to.
It says the zoning is rural lands, scenic combining, wetland waterway. I'm not seeing any wetlands. Am I missing it or?
It's out of the mine area. Yeah, they had to avoid the sensitive areas on site.
Okay.
So the mine itself wouldn't be in the wetland part of it or shouldn't be.
Okay, and as I understand it, the Manning Flat area with those deep gulches will be used for storage of aggregate or soils that are brought onto the property. Am I understanding that right?
Well, it's whatever was approved in 2003. We didn't evaluate this project as a project.
Okay.
It's strictly an extension of what had been approved. And so we didn't get into the minute details of what's going to go where, future expansion areas, et cetera. That'll happen under the modification.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chavez, do you have any questions for staff before I open it up for public comment?
No questions.
Okay. We will open this item up for public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, you're welcome to approach the podium. And is there any hands in the Zoom room? No hands raised. Okay, I'll take one final look around and close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for action on the extension.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the Planning Commission find that the use permit extension UPM 22-01 applied for by DNA Rich Rock on property located at 8350 and 8400 Highway 29 in Lower Lake, further described as APNs 011-069-12 and 011-069-13 meets the requirements of Article 7 and 27, Table B of the Lake County zoning ordinance. I therefore recommend that the Planning Commission approval of use permit extension UPM 22-01 be granted and shall extend the use permit UP 03-04 for a period of 20 years subject to the original conditions on attachment three and with the findings listed in the staff report dated October 13th, 2022.
All in second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there's a disagreement with the Planning Commission's decision, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the Planning Commission's final determination.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Eric. And moving on to our next timed item, public hearing on consideration of a major, of proposed major use permit UP 20-90 for commercial cannabis cultivation for a total of 51,500 square feet of mixed light canopy area and mitigated negative declaration based on initial study IS 20-109. The applicant is Cresta Properties LLC. Property location, excuse me, project location 6267 Kelsey Creek Drive and 6245 Gold Dust Drive, Kelseyville, APNs 007-013-23 and 007-013-22. Good morning, Byron.
Good morning, members of the Commission. My name is Byron Turner. I'll be presenting use permit 20-90 for Cresta Farms.
One moment, can you bring the mic just a little closer to you a little bit? There we go.
Certainly.
Thank you.
So this is located at 6267 Kelsey Creek Drive and 6241 Gold Dust Drive, south of Kelseyville. The request is for a total of 51,500 square feet of mixed light canopy in automated greenhouses. It should be noted that based on public comments and concern, the project was relocated. It used to be, the original proposal was in the north section. It has been moved to the southern part of the properties. The property is zone agricultural. The general plan is also ag and it's in the Kelseyville planning area. It's surrounded by primarily agriculturally zoned properties as well as some rural residential, some suburban reserve, and APZ. You can see from his vicinity map, it is south, directly south of the town of Kelseyville. The project's scope consists of, I guess, again, 51,500 square feet of canopy, all entirely within greenhouses on 84,000 square feet of cultivation area. That refers to the total disturbed area, which would include seven barns, a waste area. There's also a house and a cottage on the site. There's an existing barn on the property. 10 storage tanks are proposed for water storage. The well produces 10 gallons a minute and there will be equipped with an automated drip irrigation system in order to conserve water. There'll be four, between four and 12 employees, depending on what season it is, up to four during peak cultivation season, up to 12 during harvest season. The access is from Gold Dust Drive, although it has a, although it does have a Kelsey Creek address, the access is from Gold Dust Drive. To discuss the greenhouses, although the greenhouses are fully automated with controls that manage fans, lights, and interior curtain blackout tarps, and it does meet all of the definitions of a greenhouse that the county has prescribed in its zoning ordinance. Staff has reviewed the project for compliance with the general plan, the Kelseyville Community Area Plan, the zoning ordinance, as well as straight state regulations. The, as stated earlier, the general plan is ag. There's no conflicting policies within the general plan and as you know, no specific policies addressing commercial cannabis in the general plan. We do have a couple of Kelseyville Area Plan policies that it's consistent with, particularly visual screening, setback from the roadways, and no development occurring within, no develop, oh, and then, yeah, screening, visual screening as well, and fencing and security. So the zoning ordinance was also, I also reviewed Article 27, uses permitted, Article 5, agricultural, and Article 34, scenic combining district. There is no development occurring within the scenic combining district. A mitigated native declaration is prepared for this project. All identified impacts have been mitigated and reduced to less significant. It was circulated from February to March in 2022. The document proposed mitigation measures to reduce potentially significant impacts, as I stated, to less significant level. Specifically, I'm going to walk through those mitigations, not, I'm not going to read them word for word, but for aesthetics, the mitigations are a lighting plan, the use of blackout material, screening with fencing and vegetation. For air quality, the applicant will need to get all the necessary air quality permits and diesel power requirements. There's also surfacing and dust mitigation conditions. With regard to biology, there's a pre-construction nesting bird survey required. That is if construction occurs between February and August, which would be the breeding season. If nesting birds are found, then the biologist will establish appropriate buffers. There's also no construction during the rainy season, which is October to April. So there's a very small window where that biological mitigation would not apply. There's also mitigations to stay away from water and measures to prevent discharge into Kelsey Creek. With regard to cultural resources, there is training of staff to identify cultural resources. There's training to determine what to do if cultural resources are discovered. And then there's the standard mitigation regarding remains. With regard to geologic mitigation, there's limits of soil disturbance during the rainy season again and best management practices with regard to runoff. Hazardous materials, there's requirements regarding storage and disposal of hazardous materials. Hydrology and water quality, this site is 800 feet from Kelsey Creek, but there are mitigations, again, in the geologic and the hazardous to ensure that nothing will be runoff into the, into Kelsey Creek. There's noise limits on hours, noise levels, and prohibiting generators except for an emergency. There's also a wildfire evacuation plan requirement. Also point out that while the initial study that was circulated, was circulated prior to the relocation of the greenhouses, staff reviewed the entirety of the file to ensure that the analysis done was for the whole property, not just the greenhouse site. So specifically, especially with the biological resources and the cultural resources, those studies did address the areas that the greenhouses were moved to and therefore recirculation of the initial study was not required. So it's therefore staff's recommendation to adopt the initial study 20-109 and approve use permit 20-90 with the conditions of findings and conditions of approval available for any questions. And I believe the applicant is here as well.
Thank you for your report, Byron, and I do appreciate the bullet points that you, that you addressed as well. Do either of the Commissioners have any questions for staff or right now?
Yeah, I do. I found this report really confusing because, I mean, right here, it says that it's for outdoor cannabis cultivation. So I was really confused about that. Also in the, I think it was in the staff report, it refers to it as an agricultural use. It says the cultivation of cannabis is an agricultural use and would take place both in pots and in the native soil.
Okay. So there were some, this staff report that you got was kind of a Frankenstein's monster created by multiple people, multiple drafts. I hope, I hope to be able to clarify anything. It's, everything is in greenhouses. We will make sure that the staff reports coming from here on out are going to be clear.
And can we clarify about whether this is or is not an agricultural use?
Well, cannabis, cannabis cultivation is conditionally approved use in the agricultural district. So it depends on how you want to define agriculture.
Yeah, it's considered a commercial use and that's really important because we have an ag ordinance in this county that allows agriculture to do a lot of things that commercial production cannot. So I want to make that differentiation. There were a number of problems I had with the, with the project, but I think that there's other people here who want, who will speak to those more articulately than I will.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chavez, any questions for staff or the applicant?
No, no questions.
We will go ahead and take the time now to open this item up for public comment. Feel free to approach the podium. And there is a sign-in sheet. If you can, please be sure to write down your first and last name and you'll have three minutes. If you want to do that after, you're more than welcome. That's fine.
My name's Mike Marshall. I'm the nearby property owner.
Good morning.
On the other side of the fence. I was here a month ago against this project. I believe that, I don't think that this thing should be allowed. First of all, one of the things that was brought up here today was the prevention of runoff into the Kelsey Creek. Well, I don't know if any of you have visited, physically visited this property that's on the Kelsey Creek side of this property. This property that they're proposing, this, this project is up on what we call the bench. And my driveway and my neighbor's driveway, we live right up on the edge of the bench, on the bench, on the other side. on the bench, on the other side of this fence. And our driveways go down the inside area of the bench, down to the lower field or the lower property there, and it, and it, the driveways travel out right to the property, the edge of the property line of this lower field of this LLC. Well, the problem here is that the previous owner of the property, Bert Harlan, he's passed away now. He, he had an agreement with the county. Because of the lay of the land that slopes from, from the road back against that bench, because of all of the runoff that comes off of that hillside during these major rainstorms, it gathers right down at the bottom of the hill where my driveway and my neighbor's driveway come into what we call a T-intersection, and then the driveway runs out to the road. But the lay of the land is like this. Water doesn't go uphill. So Mr. Harlan had built and maintained a drainage ditch along the base of that bench, all the way around his wellhouse down there, all the way around the corner to a culvert that had been put in there by the county. And that water then ran under the road, crossed over to where the old Judge Harpum's property was, and eventually made its way out to Kelsey Creek itself. Now, that, that ditch, I'm telling, the drainage ditch I'm speaking about, right along the base of that hill there, of the bench, has been filled in. Along with, there is no ditch along Kelsey Creek Drive that fronts this property. There's a, there's a culvert there where my driveway crosses over into the, onto the road for the, for the driveway, and that was, had to be put in, the county required that culvert to be put in there for drainage. However, the drainage ditch going along the front of that, of Kelsey Creek Drive has been filled in. Now, the agreement made, that I understand, and as you can call it hearsay, between Mr. Harlan and the county, was that he grew grapes down there, and his grapes, his, his vines ran quite close to where the road was, and the county was only concerned about the runoff down at the base of that that bench there, which involved my driveway and my neighbor's driveway. Now, when it rains, that, that hillside there is full of squirrel holes. There's a, there's a two, 2,001 squirrels that live there. And when it gets wet, those squirrel holes start to percolate water out there, and the drainage comes off of that hillside, and it comes down, and it gathers down, right down there at the base of our driveways. Now, that drainage ditch that originally had been put in has been filled in, and the LLC has already installed solar panels down there, which I spoke with a fellow, the installer, and he gave me this fellow's cell phone number to call, who was in charge, or the foreman, or whoever it was. I reached out to him by cell phone, and I never got a reply from him. And so therefore, this whole issue about the flooding and the drainage down there, eventually those chemicals are going to percolate down through that bench and out the squirrel holes, and it's going to make its way, have to make its way down to Kelsey Creek Drive, or down to, to the creek. So I'd like to, you know, point that out to you. Reaching out to this fellow, whoever he was, to take and reestablish these, these, this one ditch that went around the perimeter of that bench there, you know, there was absolutely no, no reply to it at all. And now that they put the, the solar in there, the fellow that installed it has run the underground conduit right through that ditch and covered it up. So there's no way that that water is going to get out of there without going down there and pumping it out. So I'd like to point that out. None of this was addressed at, up here with this. And the other thing is that this project is going to really upset the peace and tranquility of, of the whole neighborhood. There's new homes that were, had been built down there at Kelsey Creek and 29, and they're occupied now, and there's several other homes along Kelsey Creek Drive that are outside the 300-foot perimeter of this project, that I'm quite sure they would be really upset if they found out about this going in, and they didn't have any, any say about it, but, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to speak for them, but that's about all I have to say about this project. I just urge you to, to just, you know, disallow this project because it's, it's, we don't want Kelseyville, Kelsey Creek to be, or I mean, Kelseyville, who once used to be the pear capital of the world, to be the new marijuana capital of Lake County, because this is huge. So I'm just, you know, tell you what I think.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to approach the podium. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Mike Wiley, and my property is immediately adjacent to the property in question. And I share the driveway that has just been spoken about by the previous neighbor, Mr. Marshall. I also have concerns because of the proximity of the, and the size of the project that's proposed, about the water use from the water table that we share. We have taken many steps in the past years because of the droughts, and to reduce our water use in order to preserve the water table as best can be done by being conservative. This project is not going to be a conservative project, and will impact the water table dramatically. And the property owner has improved his well power, both on his upper well, which is on Gold Dust, and additional well that is on Kelsey Creek area. The power for all those has been, the Gold Dust was converted from a diesel-powered pump to electric just recently by the new property owner, at great expense, I'm sure. And he also installed solar panels in the lower field on the Kelsey Creek side to power the well that's down on the, on the lower field. All of the excavation and for the new water lines that were provided, he provided from the lower well on Kelsey Creek side up to the upper field to provide additional water supply for his project. And of course, anyone who's done any research on the growing of this product, the two issues that are primary in the growth of this product is water and power. That's how they identify when the law enforcement is, used to be searching for illegal growers, was, they took note of the power and water usage in the area, and they zero in right on these factories. Even when they had their own generators, it was obvious from the, the usage that someone was growing a cannabis product. So the other effect, of course, is a, is a personal one for, for my property, is the impact of the, the property value itself. We have a small piece of property with a few walnut trees and a home, and it's basically residential slash agricultural property. And that's one of the reasons why we've been so conservative. And we had, we removed a above-ground swimming pool because of, we, we had to cut off our irrigation to all of our gardens and, and lawn area in order to provide the water for the refill of the swimming pool when, during the drought season. So any usage of the, the water in the area should be in, considered conservative in order to try to maintain a proper balance, given the drought conditions and the lack of rain. And those are my concerns.
Thank you for your comment.
I'm sorry.
I was just thanking you for your comment.
I'm not, I have hearing aids, and I'm not, not computing.
It's okay.
She said, "Thank you for your comment."
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Sharon Zoller, and I live at 6570 Kelsey Creek Drive in Kelseyville. So I have, I have some questions about the staff report that was available online for this meeting, and so if I may ask these questions. So I think that Ms. Field already mentioned that in the first sentence, it says outdoor cannabis. So that was really confusing because in the next sentence, it says mixed light canopy. So I think that you did clarify, gentleman there clarified that it is all in greenhouses. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So there was not a number listed on this particular piece of information, but on the one from the April 28th that said 24 greenhouses, is that still the number?
No.
So there was no number listed. What is, what are the number of greenhouses that are proposed for at this time?
I'm pulling up the site plan here.
One of the reports says cultivation operations will occur in 360 by 120 and 390 by 120, so total of six.
Right, so I saw that on the, on that page, and then just below it, or just above it, it says two and three, so it's either five or it's six. So that's, seems like a boo-boo of some sort. So I
I believe staff is pulling those numbers for you just to confirm. Is there anything else while he's pulling on that information?
Yes. Okay, so I was looking under the hydrology usage, and under, third paragraph down, it talks about a water, an originally submitted hydrology report. I could not find that in the documentation.
The hydrology report is attached, and it is, I'm confirming that it is 360 by 120 greenhouses and then 390 by 120 greenhouses.
Okay, so, so then the first word says three and two is an error.
Yes.
All right, so the hydrology report that is, is attached is the second one, but I'm asking about the originally submitted one, which was not in the original application. The original application shows a, a report from Pete's Tractor and Pump.
The hydrology report that was attached is the most recent.
I understand that. What I'm asking is, where's the one that is?
It would be in the file, in the, in the planning department, but not published as part of this, as an attachment.
Okay, so I'm going to take issue with that because, first of all, the original applicant, it says the original applicants, the applicant originally submitted a hydrology report prepared by Dr. Brock Zoller, PCA dated December 14th. The original applicant did not own the property then, and Dr. Brock Zoller did not prepare any hydrology report. This is an incorrect statement.
Perhaps the applicant and, and the advisors can answer that question after.
Sure. So we'll just, we'll keep going with your questions, and then we'll have staff and the applicant be able to give you a rebuttal and some answers.
Okay. The, the second hydrology report does say that the, that the annual water use will be increased, and so I want to sort of echo the other gentleman's comment about the water table. If it's a 10-gallon minute well, and they're going to fill 10 5,000, 5,000 gallon tanks, that's a lot of pumping of a lot of water to fill those tanks on a regular basis, and it will greatly impact the water table up there on, on the bench. The, the other, the other comment I want to make is, Ms. Field already made it that, that this is not an agricultural but a commercial enterprise. So I think that we want to be very careful when we say it's agricultural, because it is not. It is commercial, and this is not zone commercial. The other thing is that the letters that were submitted per the regulations were all negative, although stated in here that there is not a problem with any of the neighbors stated in this report. So I think that that's kind of inconsistent, because each one of the letters was negative. And I'd like to ask you to reread the letter that my husband and I submitted that talked about the volatiles that come off the growth of cannabis, and it's very close to Kelseyville proper and to Kelseyville High School. There were a couple of other little, I say There were a couple of other little, I say minor things. First of all, it says that the property borders Kelsey Creek. It does not border Kelsey Creek. And it is, the property borders Kelsey Creek Drive, not Kelsey Creek itself. So, looking through this report, it is fraught with errors, inconsistencies, and some actual incorrect statements. And I recommend that the project not be approved based on a very flawed piece of information that was put out to the public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask Ms. Zoller some questions? Would that be inappropriate?
I'll look to Nicole for that. Do you want her to be able to create dialogue between the public comments?
Well, the issue is that the public comments, it's not a time for dialogue. You can however ask for clarifications. You can, if questions were unclear and
Okay.
Oh, can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
One more thing. Just to, on the last page, it says this project is consistent with a Lake County general plan, Middletown area plan. So, is it Middletown or is it Kelseyville?
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Did somebody have a question? No.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there any hands in the Zoom room, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If we can get over to those.
Brett Levinson.
Brett Levinson, if you, we're going to unmute you. If you could please confirm your first and last name.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you very much. This is Bart Levinson. I'm sorry, I'm getting feedback echo on the line. This is an example of where clearly you're being told by the surrounding neighbors that the information they were provided with is not correct. It does affect them. It affects them greatly. They have serious concerns. And the way this, this permit process seems to go is that as long as the applicant says, oh, well, they'll take care of anything, that the immunity development department says, oh, okay. Well, it's not okay. And this is indicative of a problem throughout Lake County that many citizens have been speaking to in town halls all around the lake about their experiences living next to commercial marijuana grows that are not agriculture, that are commercial. There's a push on now to talk about cannabis growing like it is ag, but it isn't in Lake County. It's commercial. So I hope that you'll take very seriously the comments that you're hearing from the people who live next to this grow. And also, if, that you'll look seriously at what actually happens when a project uses mixed light. You can think that all of that light is blocked, but I don't think that the applicant has actually told you what the actual practices are for mixed light use, what the actual equipment used is, that it's a 24/7 operation. It affects the night sky lighting. It affects the 24-hour sound. There are vehicles coming to and fro. There are a lot of effects when switching to mixed light. And I hope that the planning commission and the CDD will take another look at, at looking at the actual impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other hands in the Zoom room, Jim?
Yes, there's another one.
Okay.
Richard Durham.
Richard Durham. We're going to unmute you and then if you could please just confirm your first and last name.
Hello? Hello?
Good morning.
Hear me?
We can hear you. Just please, if you could just confirm your first and last name.
My name is Richard Durham. I'm a real estate agent here in Lake County. I'm also a cultivation consultant for cannabis. I've heard concerns today from neighbors and I'd like to address a couple of them. One of them is the nutrients that are used
I, I don't mean to cut you off. We're just getting a lot of feedback on your, on your mic maybe?
I'll try to see if I can unmute that. The concerns of the nutrient runoff.
That's better.
Nutrients are very expensive items. It will not be mismanaged by any farmer who is trying to make a profit. And because they are in an enclosed area with limited water usage, there will really be no runoff that would be acceptable to the, to the Kelsey Creek watershed. Also, on the water use, because they are indoors, they are in a greenhouse, they are conserving water and the pots, the pot evaporation, the water evaporation from the soil is less. So the water usage is less and it's much less than grapes. Also, as far as the energy use, I'm glad that they went from a polluting diesel generator to clean electrical use and, and solar panels, which shows that they are being sensitive to the usage of their energy. And on the other one, the neighbors worried about their property values. Well, as a Realtor, I can tell you that you can take a $600,000 property and raise its value by a million dollars by a correct license on it. So actually, they're doing the neighbors a favor because they're upping the value of the property in their neighborhood. And as far as the ag versus commercial, so right now, because it's federally illegal, it cannot be an agricultural product. But as we see now that the federal government is getting closer to national legalization, it will be an agricultural product. So before we demonize it, call it a commercial product, it is actually going to, in the very near future, an agricultural product. And as far as the mixed light system of growing, it will be the future of cannabis growing in Lake County. The dispensaries throughout the state like the fact that they can be selling fresh cannabis three times, four times a year versus a full-term outdoor, which is one harvest a season. So we're going to be seeing many more of these projects and we should learn to understand their usage and their impact on our community. But that, thank you for letting me speak.
Did, does that conclude your statement, Mr. Durham? I'm going to take that as a yes, or we, we could have possibly lost you. So I will go ahead
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comment. We will go ahead and come back to chambers. And if you'd like to speak, you're welcome to state your first and last name.
Thank you Chair. My name is Stephen Liu. I'm the consultant for the applicant. I just want to address some of the concerns that were brought up and any discrepancies that were identified. I wanted to note that as the previous caller stated, you know, my client's investing in sustainability. He believes in it. That's why he converted, you know, polluting dag or polluting diesel generator into, you know, electrical connection. Project will operate on renewable energy. He will pay with, for the renewable energy rate through PG&E. The project is not proposing to use diesel generators as a primary power source. Furthermore, the, the solar panels installed in the, the field below, you know, that went through a building permit process. And so I, you know, was hoping all, any kind of drainage concerns or any kind of agreements with the county would have been identified as part of any permitting process that was done for impacts in that lower field. And the solar panels are for, the lower well is for the residents only. The solar panels were installed to power the existing residents as well as that lower well. And the upper well is now connected to PG&E. With respect to concerns about pollution and pesticides and runoff to Kelsey Creek, as the previous caller stated, the, the operations are enclosed and so there should not be runoff generated, you know, coming off the property. As, and the other factors are, are twofold. The pesticide regulations for cannabis are extremely stringent. And so, you know, if anything, it, it would disallow use of pesticides on the surrounding vineyard. So, potentially we would see like an increase in water quality because of the reduction in use of pesticides, reduction in type and limiting the type of pesticide usage to what is, you know, organic things that would been allowed, that would be allowed to be used on cannabis is what they would switch the grapes over to. Furthermore, the application rates for nutrients are reported to the water board and the water board has stringent mandates on ensuring that cultivators utilize agronomic rates, so the appropriate amount of nutrients for the crop or for the cannabis being cultivated. Furthermore, you know, the applicant will utilize, and we can make this a condition if it's an ongoing concern, but can engage a ag testing company to sample the plant tissues of the plants as they grow. It's a pretty standard process to ensure that the agronomic rate of nutrients is being applied to match what the plants need. There were concerns about the report, the previous hydrology report. The reason this project was continued was a full hydrology report was not done at water use analysis was developed, was developed by my office based on proposed water usage, the pump test reports, which by the way, the reports themselves had shown a, in 2013, a well pump test report was done. And the well yielded 300 gallons per minute. In November of 2020, an updated report was done for the project and the well yielded, yielded 1,000 gallons per minute. I believe perhaps that 10 gallons per minute number was sort of like a peak usage identified for the project. So maybe that's where that discrepancy came from. Furthermore, there was a slight, the, the updated report, hydrology report was done by a geologist and, well, there was a slight increase in potential water usage compared to the acres of grapes being displaced for the project. There was a, the, the greenhouses are going to be guttered as well as the barns and there could be 14 inches per acre foot captured for the project. And that would yield about 5,000 gallons of offset, which would reduce the, the water usage below baseline. Also want to point out that the commission, I believe, has approved a, a project within one mile of this site as well that's larger in scale. The hydrology report that was developed for this amended application, as requested at the prior hearing, included analysis for impact to surrounding wells. And it identified that for the proposed project, the zone of influence of pumping should not impact adjoining wells. And the groundwater, the Big Valley groundwater study that was published by the County of Lake, shows that there's been a long-term reduction in groundwater use in this, in the valley. So, I'm available for further questions if there are any.
Thank you. Sure. Public comment is still open, so you're welcome to speak.
Thank you. Svetuzar Sabev, I'm the owner of the property. I just want to say a few things. Stevie actually go over the, a lot of the concerns, but I just want to say that I never knew that the previous owner, Harlan, has got some, I mean, contracts with the county or something to, you know, to take care of that, that drench. I will
Let's, let's, we need, we need to just focus
I'll give you, I'll give you my phone number, which is over there. And if you, if you really called me, we can
We need, okay.
We can go further on that. So I'm not opposing, of course, you know, we put the solar there, so we need to, to keep it in a good condition, right? Also, the greenhouses, about that, they're fully automated and they had deprivation systems. So the light is never, is not going to go, you know, you cannot see the light during the time they closed. That's, that's for sure, 100%. It's a six greenhouses and two barns. That's what we reduced the project of. So it can be more, more better, better for the public, I guess. And yeah, that's about it then. Thank you.
Thank you. Taking one last look around. Any other hands in the Zoom room, Jim? Before I close public comment and bring it back to the commission? Okay. The name on there?
Noah Brad Chatten.
Good morning. We can hear you. Can you please confirm your first and last name?
Brad Chatten.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions and first a comment that the Zoom is hard to see. The map is 20% of the screen and it's hard to make out anything on it. If that could be enlarged.
I don't believe that sharing the screen can really be enlarged. However, the attachments are available online.
Okay. So I do have a couple of questions. One is water tank supplied specifically. Oh, look at there. Specifically for fire. Not, not water tanks for the grow, but water tanks for the fire. Because I have, I have noticed, and I've helped set up some tanks and set up some grows. And it's been a practice that people have attached their water supply of their fire tank and used it for their grow. And so I wonder if there is a tank specific for firefighting with a four-inch male thread and valve for, for the firefighters to use. That was one thing. And then my, another question I have is, is there any plans to expand, you know, and I, I don't have a problem with marijuana. Being grown, whether, whether it's pleasure or, or medicinal, it's, it's all good. My thing is, is the water table, of course. Everybody has that concern. And it sounds like they've made some effort to drop a deeper well and put in a bigger well and, and that may or may not affect. I'm not a hydrologist. But is there any plans to expand the grow to larger production when the prices go up? Right now, the prices are down and in making a larger grow is not smart. So the amount of land in that ag area, it could expand the grow. And I was wondering if there was any plans to expand the grow when the prices go up? And that's pretty much my question.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We will go ahead and close public comment. I just closed public comment. I, if, if you'd like, is, does it have to do with anything else that was, that has not been brought up or discussed? If you're going to speak, I need you to come up to the mic so everyone else can hear you.
I had a question about the, the hydrology report and staff was going to look at it.
And they have not had a chance to, to even put all of their information together to go ahead and reply to all the questions that have been asked.
So when might that happen?
As soon as I close public comment again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I might, we have been working very hard as a staff to ensure that staff reports will not come to you until they are ready, which means they are consistent and accurate. And this And this one obviously does not meet that standard. I apologize for that inconvenience. Very good points have been made in public input that I think staff will need time to review, analyze, and correct the errors in the staff report. I would request a continuance of this item to time and date uncertain, so that we can give it the time that it requires.
Thank you. And since public comment is officially closed, I do appreciate you kind of taking control of that and taking all the pieces. And if you feel that that is the best way to go about it, I feel like we can definitely give staff a little bit more time. Commissioner Field?
Yeah, I'm, I'm listening to all these concerns and reading these numerous letters. And I think there's a huge issue with whether this is appropriate in this neighborhood. Is it compatible use? And I don't know if I want to waste more staff time on this. The staff is very busy. We're understaffed. I think kicking it down the road again isn't necessarily a good idea. The Kelseyville bench itself is the best wine-growing area in Lake County. We have award, worldwide award-winning wines produced up there. And to threaten them with something like this when we don't know about the terpenes. And I just feel like we shouldn't be wasting any more time with this. And I'm ready to make a motion for denial.
Thank you. Commissioner Chavez?
I would like to continue this item to a date uncertain until we get all the information.
Okay, so since it is just us three commissioners, we have to have a unanimous decision or consensus, correct, Nicole?
Commissioners, for any motion that is brought to the floor, you would need a unanimous decision.
Thank you.
That includes continuance as well as approval or denial.
Thank you. So at that time, we are a little on, we are split. And not having a full commission is also making it a little bit more difficult. I'm in favor of a continuance as well. If that, you know, as staff even said, it's kind of a Frankenstein staff report. And I also can see your concern with kicking it down the road yet again. Is there any kind of a timeframe? Would you feel more comfortable if we had a date certain as opposed to a date uncertain, to kind of give staff a little window of time? No? Okay. So we are kind of at a, we're at a two to one for a continuance. We don't even have a motion on the floor at all. So it's just, right now, it's discussion.
Yeah, I just, I would like to have more commissioners here in order to make the right choice of denial or continuance as well. I just believe that this project can be continued to a date certain or uncertain, I don't mind. But I just want to have more planning commissioners here to hear more inputs and just actually take the overall of the project. Because I mean, I understand the concerns of the public. But I think just having us three here, the decision is kind of tough.
And it's not, it's not an easy position to be in. And all things considered, Commissioner Field, with the staff report and with Director Turner giving us, you know, basically requesting that staff have a chance to take the information from the public and take the concerns and kind of clean up the staff report and re-present it, might, you know, that's kind of where she's at with that.
Yeah, I think the underlying issue that we're really talking about here is we're planners. We're supposed to be planning for a big community. And we have a general plan that we're trying to adhere to and some area plans that we're not addressing this issue. And so it's really making it difficult for me to find that it's okay to do this under our general plan. So I feel too conflicted to really do anything.
Okay. I understand where you're, where you're coming from. Would you feel more comfortable having them redo it and then having more of us here to actually kind of go back through it?
You know, one thing we might consider is they're rewriting the ordinance to better fit the needs of the community. Maybe we could revisit this issue after the ordinance is in place.
Director Turner, do you have any insight on that?
You're talking about the update to the cannabis ordinance?
Yes.
That timeline is considerably longer than, we could have this probably back by the November 10 meeting.
Okay.
That would prolong it through probably later in next year.
Thank you for clarifying. Are you open to the idea of revisiting this on November 10?
No, I feel that we should be denying this. I, I'm ready to make a motion to approve it and see what happens. But this is, this is, I'm finding that it's incompatible in the neighborhood. I mean, if you look at the number of comments, it's an insult to the community. And, and to the, I mean, the property, I could go on. There's many, many issues have been brought up today. So no, I'm, I am finding that it is not a project that's suitable to this area. It's incompatible.
Okay. And I know that Commissioner Chavez also would like to have it revisited and have the staff kind of go back through the staff report and gather their information and come back to us. I'm, I'm looking for a little direction.
Yeah, we're pretty split here. So I, I mean, obviously, as I stated, I would like to continue this item to a date uncertain, just to give more time to fix the report and to have more people here to help us with this decision. Because there might be some angle that I'm not probably seeing fully here. Because I do understand the, the concerns. But I also see all the mitigation that's taking place. But there are discrepancies in here that might have confused the public on their report as well. So that's why I believe that we need more time.
And I agree with Commissioner Chavez. As far as the information provided, you know, could kind of sway. I mean, from the first paragraph, there was a little bit of mistake. There were mistakes. So I would also like to give staff the opportunity to, to correct that and then come back to us. And if we approve, if we make a motion to actually continue it, you know, there's still the possibility that it could be denied. But right now, we're just, we're at the point where we're kind of gridlocked. And if we can move it down the road and revisit it, that's kind of where we're at, as opposed to coming to a split decision. And it's automatically washed away. So.
So I will make a motion to continue this item to a date uncertain.
Okay, we have a motion. And I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See, and I'm, go ahead, and all opposed?
No.
So that means that it is automatically.
That means that that motion failed. So the item will not be continued.
Okay, so then do we have to make a motion on a decision since it's not continued?
May we take a break? And I'll see if I can find a solution here.
Not a problem. I'm showing a time now of 10:19. We will take a quick break and resume at 10:25. I appreciate everyone's patience. And after a brief break, I do believe that legal counsel has a few words to say and some direction. Nicole?
Thank you for your patience, commissioners, while I found that rule. Section, or Article 58 of the zoning ordinance, section 21-58.40, Part 58.41, addresses automatic appeals to the Board of Supervisors. And it states as follows. "If the ballot of the members of the Planning Commission results in a tie vote, or if the Planning Commission is unable to take action because of a legal disqualification or abstentions, the matter shall be deemed to be automatically denied at the first hearing at which the application is considered and is unable to be acted upon, and be appealed to the Board of Supervisors for public hearing."
Okay.
So if your, if your commission is unable to make a decision today, it would be an automatic appeal to the Board of Supervisors. And this part also states that such appeals are not subject to filing fees.
Okay, so basically, the fees are waived and they go.
Automatically to the Board of Supervisors if you're unable to take action.
Okay. Is there any conclusive verbiage that I need to say? Or anything, since the motion has been made and it has been, there wasn't an agreement. So at this time, it is to go to the Board of Supervisors?
Yes, by operation of law under Article 58 of the zoning ordinance, this item would be automatically appealed because you would need to find that your commission is unable to make a decision.
Okay. And.
Under Article 58, Part 58.41, because your commission, if your commission is unable to make a decision, it's an automatic denial. So the permit would then be denied.
Okay. So what we have on the floor now is a automatic denial. And it will be going to the Board of Supervisors. And the standard still, still remains as far as the, the appropriate forms and applicable fee, which will be waived, correct? Or do they not have to go through any, no, no forms or anything? It'll just automatically go on to their agenda?
Correct, there is no decision to appeal. So there would not be a seven-day appeal period. It would be an automatic appeal to the Planning Commission. Because the seven-day appeal period is to appeal and it's automatically being appealed.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm not leaving anything open-ended. So that concludes that agenda item. And then if the applicant has any questions, feel free to talk to your planner. Thank you for your patience with all that and your help, Nicole. All right, moving on. I will turn it over to Director Turner for some department updates.
Thank you. I just wanted to express appreciation that Commissioner Field is going to go to the Institute for Local Government Regional Planning Commission Training tomorrow in Arcata.
Excellent.
We also have a link that we're going to send to you from the Institute of Local Government, which is the Planning Commissioners Handbook. It's got all kinds of stuff that you can just refer to at your leisure. And we will also be on watch for additional trainings as they come up. So if you find one, feel free to send it to me. We'll take a look.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I've reserved a little bit in our budget just for planning commissioners, so.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
And I hope you have a great time in Arcata.
And that concludes my report for today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you, any questions for our director or anything, you guys? Okay. I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.